Good morning. We're going to get started now. I had a couple of issues we had to resolve. And thank you very much for being here today. I note that the hour has come, that we have a quorum present, and we will now come to order. Let's real quickly like to ask for if anyone has an electronic device, be it a phone or any other type of device that makes noise, is you can please turn it off now or turn it on silent? We really would appreciate that. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Rabbi Yo' Khan On of the Benay, excuse me, cover this up, of the Abraham Shabbat. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Scola. I would ask all members and guests to please rise.
Almighty God, Master of the universe, the members of this august body, the City Council, convene here to fulfill one of the seven commandments which you first issued to Adam at the time of his creation fifty-seven eighty-three years ago, and then reissued to Noah and his sons after the great flood, the commandment to govern by just laws. At the dawn of civilization, as related in the biblical book of Genesis, you issued the following seven values as a divine code for human conduct, which came to be known as the Noahide laws. They form a framework for universal morality, safety, peace, stability, and unity, enabling us to share our beautiful planet. One, belief in a single God who created the universe, conducts its affairs, and is intimately invested in our lives. An Almighty God who loves us, watches our behavior, scrutinizes our hearts, and rewards goodness to worship you alone and not to serve idols. Two, words are powerful and should be used carefully, never to profane or blaspheme your holy name. Three, not to murder. As our city deals with a crisis of gun violence, we affirm our belief in the sanctity of human life as a non-negotiable value. Each human being is an entire world. Taking a life goes against the very purpose of our existence. Four, theft is a violation of the boundaries that are integral to human relationships, respecting our fellow citizens and the integrity of their property, not to steal, lie, or cheat. Five, respecting the family unit as a sacred divine gift that must be enshrined and cherished, not violated, not to commit adultery, incest, or any other aberration of our intimate family relationships. Six, we are God's representatives to care for the world and its creations. We are responsible for the welfare of animals and are commanded not to be cruel to any living creature. Finally, seven, the only way to address injustice is to establish an ethical and unbiased judicial system. Every society should govern by just laws which are based on the recognition and acknowledgement of you, God, as the sovereign ruler of all people and nations. The responsibility of this City Council is thus critical to the function of our society. We, the citizens of this blessed city of Philadelphia, the city of brotherly love, proudly proclaim this recognition and our commitment to justice in our nation's pledge of allegiance, "One Nation Under God, with Liberty and Justice for All." Those assembled here to enact laws that govern this blessed city are elevated in our society to preserve and safeguard democracy and freedom in our daily lives, thereby enhancing our divine service to the ultimate lawmaker and law enforcer, the creator of the universe. Grant us, Almighty God, that they be cognizant of your presence and conduct their deliberations accordingly. Bless the esteemed members of this council with good health, wisdom, compassion, good cheer, good fellowship, and added security in these challenging times. May they constantly realize that in laboring for the enactment of just laws, they are doing your will. May God bless America, and let us say amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Rabbi. Thank you. Thank you very much. And we'd like to again thank the Rabbi for his invocation this morning. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, December fifteen, two thousand twenty-two, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, be approved.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. That the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, December fifteen, two thousand twenty-two, stand approved. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and our Journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of members of council, there is a request for leave of absent from Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you. Chair thanks the councilmen, and leave shall be granted. The Chair recognizes Councilman Scola for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to our session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters: Resolutions authorizing hearings; amendments to bills on first reading; the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor; amendments to bills recalled from the mayor; resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session; a motion to withdraw a bill or a resolution that is not on the calendar; and a motion placing a bill or a resolution on or returning a bill or a resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included in the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. That the legislative matters stated by Councilman Scola may be added to the agenda for today. Should those matters arise during the course of today's session, should those matters arise during the course of today's session, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries. And our next order of business is communications. And the clerk will please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that he may have in his possession today.
From the mayor to the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on December twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, January four, January ten, and January sixteen, two thousand twenty-three, I signed all the bills that were passed by council on December fifteen, two thousand twenty-two, except bill number two-two-zero-three-two-two AAA, which I am returning without my signature. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of twenty-three fifteen, twenty-three sixteen, twenty-three seventeen, twenty-three eighteen, twenty-three thirty-seven, twenty-three thirty-nine, twenty-three forty-nine Greenwood Street, seventeen oh nine, seventeen eleven, eighteen twenty-two R dash thirty-four, eighteen thirty-six Point Breeze Avenue, fifteen fifty-five South Ringgold Street, twenty-four forty-five Frederick Street, and twenty-three twenty-nine Ellsworth Street, located in the Second Councilmanic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of three thousand one Martha Street, located in the First Councilmanic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of seventeen thirty-six North Twenty-Second Street, located in the Fifth Councilmanic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of nine eleven, nine thirteen, nine fifteen, nine nineteen, nine twenty-one, nine twenty-three, and nine twenty-five West Auburn Street, located in the Fifth Councilmanic District, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And I would ask the clerk to please read the titles of the bills and resolutions that are being introduced today by our members.
Councilman Thomas offers one resolution, a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Champion of the Week, the Gerard Academic Music Program Competitive Spirit Squad for becoming the first ever Philadelphia Public League Grand Champions of the Competitive Spirit Championship. Councilman Jones offers four bills and five resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark and ordinance amending Title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by defining and clarifying certain definitions. And on his own behalf, an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of North Fifty-seventh Street between Lansdowne Avenue and Media Street. And an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of North Parkside Avenue between Winfield Avenue and Monument Road. And an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter relating to civil service exemptions for staff of the Citizens Police Oversight Commission.
Thank you. Those bills will be referred to the appropriate committees.
And on behalf of Council President Clark, a resolution reappointing James Aros Jr. to the position of Chief Assessment Officer of the Office of Property Assessment.
And we refer to committee.
And a resolution approving the reappointment of Wendell Anthony Ouing to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Rate Board.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Cadet Second Lieutenant Cahim Bailey Taylor for receiving the Medal of Heroism, the U.S. Army's highest honor, for JTROC students for his bravery in the face of gun violence.
And today's calendar.
And on his own behalf, a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter to provide for exemption from civil service for staff of the Citizens Police Oversight Commission and providing for the submission to the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring Philadelphia's new generation of living legends, Isaac Aki Raw Gardner, Ernest Owens, Chad Fane, Matt Kane, Tom "Tom Flies" Manning, Colin Chambers, and Demona "Mona" Love for their roles as podcast influencers as part of the commemoration of Black History Month. Councilman Johnson offers three resolutions.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. We introduced a amendment today to our bill dealing with steep slope legislation. What we have been doing, which I promised Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson to do, is begin a series of meetings with constituents from as far away as Eastwick and to the neighbors of the golf course, such as Overbrook Park Civic and others. And in so doing, we've been addressing some of the concerns about exempting that golf course from steep slopes. What we want to do is limit the exemption and clarify that they cannot build impervious surfaces on that slope. So what we're doing is, it is not today we are looking at being able to have that dialogue between now and next week to come up with further compromises and understandings. I think communications is key. Some of my members have raised these issues with me, and we are listening, and it's not falling on deaf ears. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for that clarification. So there will be an amendment and further discussion on said legislation. Mr. Decker, please proceed.
Councilman Johnson offers three resolutions: A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of twenty-three fifteen, twenty-three sixteen, twenty-three seventeen, twenty-three eighteen, twenty-three thirty-seven, twenty-three thirty-nine, twenty-three forty-nine Greenwood Street, seventeen oh nine, seventeen eleven, eighteen twenty-two R through thirty-four, eighteen thirty-six Point Breeze Avenue, fifteen fifty-five South Ringgold Street, twenty-four forty-five Frederick Street, and twenty-three twenty-nine Ellsworth Street, located in the Second Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution appointing Albert Little Page to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Land Bank.
Next week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring Word Radio on the occasion of their twentieth anniversary and recognizing the station's role as the voice of the African-American community.
This week's calendar.
Councilman Harity offers two bills and titled in ordinance amending Section nine eleven oh two through eleven twenty-three of the Philadelphia Code entitled verification of life partnerships by removing gendered language relating to same-sex and same-gender couples, expanding access to this life partnerships regardless of gender.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Chapter eleven two hundred of the Philadelphia Code to impose additional conditions on permotees and contractors to prepare openings on public streets. Councilwoman Gotti offers an ordinance amending Section fourteen five thirteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled TOD, Transit Oriented Development Overlay District, and amending Section fourteen five thirty-three of the Philadelphia Code entitled MIN, Mixed Income Neighborhoods Overlay District, to expand the applicable areas of each district in the vicinity of Market Street between Fifty-Fourth Street and Sixty-Third Street.
Refer to committee.
Councilman O'Neill offers two bills and one resolution entitled an ordinance amending Chapter twelve twenty-eight hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Administrative Adjudication to Parking Violations by further providing with respect to monetary penalties for on-street parking of semi-trailers and truck tractors.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three from the Grants Revenue Fund, Certain Rural City Offices, Departments, Boards, and Commissions, to the General Fund, Certain Rural City Offices, Departments, Boards, and Commissions.
Refer to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing requests to the Law Department to represent City Council in an appeal from the decisions of the Department of Licenses and Inspections to the Philadelphia Zoning Board of Adjustment or the License and Inspection Review Board, and if the Law Department declines to render such services to City Council, authorizing the retention of outside council to provide such services. Councilman O offers one bill and two resolutions and titled an ordinance amending Bill number eight seventy-seven, authorizing the establishment of the Philadelphia Activities Fund by allowing at-large council members to bring recreational assistance activities and programs to the PAF Board of Directors for funding consideration. And a privileged resolution commending and honoring Oliver St. Clair Franklin, CBE, an honorary consul for his appointment as commander of the British Empire by Queen Elizabeth the Second.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the two thousand twenty-two winners of PHL Live Center Stage.
And today's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. And our next order of business will be reports from committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for report for the committee on rules.
Thank you, Council President. The Committee on Rules reports two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules, which is referred Bill number two-two-zero-seven-seven-zero entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the measurements of zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Cotman Avenue, Oxford Avenue, Tyson Avenue, Rising Sun Avenue, Glenview Street, Bingham Street, Kerpen Street, Rising Sun Avenue, Unruh Avenue, Martins Mill Road, City Boundary, and Hasbro Avenue. And Bill number two-two-zero-nine-four-two entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designation of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Parkside Avenue, Forty-Ninth Street, Jefferson Street, and Forty-Eighth Street Extended. Respectfully reports that as considered and amended the same and returns attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading of this day of bills number two-two-zero-seven-seven-zero and two-two-zero-nine-four-two.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number two-two-zero-seven-seven-zero and two-two-zero-nine-four-two. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar at our next session of council. That concludes our reports from committee. And our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. They will be on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. There are no additional bills on the first reading calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on our second reading and final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers: two-two-one zero-two-six, two-two-one zero-two-nine, two-two-one zero-three-two, two-two-one zero-three-three, two-two-one zero-four-two, and two-two-zero-nine-eighteen.
Thank you, Councilman. Before we move into our public comment, I just want to make an announcement. We have a provision that I'll read shortly in our rules that allows us to limit the number of repetitious comments. Today, we will have to enact that rule. We have a significant number of individuals that are here to testify on the aforementioned golf course in Overbrook. Frankly speaking, way too many on the same subject matter. So we are going to select a number of individuals that are in support of and are in opposition of. What I will do, to try and be fair, is to read the names of the individuals that were listed to testify who would not be speaking. Just want to say, is that okay with the sponsor?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. All right. And we have gotten, and also, if there is anyone whose name is not called to testify that has signed up, if you have written testimony, you can please submit your written testimony. It will be placed as a matter of record in the testimony, in the record for today's council session. And as indicated earlier by the sponsor of that bill, the bill will not be called up for a vote today. There will be several amendments and several more community meetings to discuss the issue before final passes. And with that, let me state the process. As I said, we will be considering public comment. It will go as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passes calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up and testify. If you have not already signed up for your session, please do so now by giving your name to the sergeant-at-arms at the table set up outside, in the hallway, outside the council chambers. Once you have signed up, you will be called in order in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet. And under ideal circumstances, we would normally have three minutes because of the volume and our interest in making sure that we get as many people in as possible. We're going to limit it to two minutes. So if you have testimony, please adjust your testimony to reflect the number of people, the number as it relates to the time limit. As I indicated, in order to be fair, we're going to hold faithfully to the time limit. And when you begin to speak, and you will see a green light on the podium. When there are thirty seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is a reminder to conclude your remarks. Once your three minutes have passed, the light will turn red, and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you had already done so. We talked about the rules as it relates to repetitious comment. So we will try our best to accommodate a number of individuals. And again, I will read the names of those people who have signed up. Mr. Decker, can you please call the first name on the list?
The first speaker today we have, Mr. President, is Henry Davis commenting on two-two-zero-nine-eighteen.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is, I hope that this is, okay, thank you. I've been thrust into the breach this morning, so bear with me a moment. There you go. That's what I'm looking for. Thank you. My name is Henry Davis. I'm a board member of the Eastwick Friends and Neighbors Coalition, which is an environmental justice nonprofit community organization. I've been a resident at Eastwick for approximately seven years. And Eastwick community, as we know, is a flood-prone neighborhood. The seven years, during the seven years that I have been a resident, I've observed the devastation of damages caused by repetitive flooding from the nineteen ninety-nine floodstorms. I spoke to other residents that have suffered the damage and have gone through the process of reforming their homes, and they continue to stay at the Eastwick area. The Floyd Storm and Tropical Storm ISIS, where Eastwick residents are still in recovery. What specifically concerns me about the proposed bill at two-two-zero-nine-one-eight is the lack of public input and transparency and the potential increase of flooding and other environmental impacts in Eastwick. As a constituent, we yet to have received enough information to make an informed decision about the bill's ecological effects on Eastwick and other downstream communities such as Cobb Creek and Darby. Therefore, I urge you not to vote on this bill on January nineteenth, which is today, of course, but instead vote it on January thirty-first. Of course, Mr. President, we've heard the comments you've made regarding the amendments to comply with the commission's recommendations by responding to community concerns, including the following: One, lack of details about the proposed steep slope disturbances and long-term measures to ensure the stability of the slopes. Number two, lack of a comprehensive environmental impact study including but not limited to the increased risk of erosion, landslides, substance from clearing trees and vegetation from steep slopes, increased sedimentation leading to the aquatic habitat degradation, risk of leaks from damage to the underground eight-inch high-pressure petroleum pipelines. high-pressure petroleum pipeline caused by the increased erosion, landslides, and subsidence, the impact of high tightly woven netting. Yes?
Now, give him a little extra time. He had troubles. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Another 30 seconds.
Note netting on both local bird life and neighborhood viewshed, and increased runoff from the toxic pesticides and other chemicals used in the maintenance of golf courses. I'm going to cut this down. Number three, no explanation as to the developer cannot apply for approval of the proposed steep slope disturbances through the regular zoning process. Number four, lack of community outreach to inform residents about the bill and its environmental impacts. Number five, no comprehensive plan to monitor long-term environmental impacts of this project. And in closing, number six, no explanation how there will be enough room for walking trails around the perimeter of the golf course without an offset between the 150-foot wall that's going to separate the residents from the golf course. Doesn't make sense.
All right.
And neighbors' properties. I'm going to cut it short because my time has expired. Thank you.
Okay, I got it in there. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, sir. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Harriet Ackman, commenting on 220918.
Right here.
Harriet Ackman. The next speaker is Shamar Pitts. Shamar Pitts.
Come in. Here you go.
Commenting on 220918.
My name is Shamar Pitts. Good morning, everyone. Sorry. My name is Shamar Pitts. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Glad to be here this morning. So, in lieu of time, and the council president asking us to keep it short, I'm going to keep it short. So with this plan to build a golf course in Cobb's Creek, I definitely object to it because of the things that I see in our neighborhoods and in our communities. And what we see, we all see it. We see the gun violence. And the bottom line is, the reason why it's so bad is because our communities have been cut off from the economics of the city for a very long time. And we've been cut off from proper education for a very long time. So this is the reason why we have so much violence right now. This is the reason why you see kids getting younger and younger committing these crimes. And I believe that it's not their fault. They have been neglected. They have been neglected, and I have been neglected when I was their age. So it's been going on for a very long time. So now, we have opportunities now in the city with redevelopment to make an economic, words just messed me up sometimes, an economic investment in our youth, in our communities. And this is one of those times. We have a huge expanse of land where we can use that to benefit the youth. And we can use that with the brilliant ideas that we have. And I think that the $6 million that they got with a grant from the state and in the city budget could have went to things that we need. And we always come for money. And it's hard for us to get funded for the things that we need. And here you have billionaires with a $60 million project. We never get spent $60 million. $60 million projects on us is unheard of. These are the things we need to turn the tide on gun violence and the things that plague us in our city and have been plaguing us for a long time. And I'm going to end because the red light been came on. So thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it, sir.
The next speaker is Edison Frazier, commenting on 220918.
Good morning. Good morning. Edison Frazier for PhillyThrive. And I wasn't going to oppose this bill to Cobb's Creek, but I was out there the other day with my dog, walking the dog. And I happened to come to the guy, to the guy named Enrique. He the operation of Cobb's Creek Foundation. He out there shooting paintball. He out there, he out there with golf balls already. Ain't even get approved for this stuff. He don't even know who he was talking to. He out there with golf balls, shooting golf balls and all that. Now, let me tell you, let me tell you this. Cutting down the trees is our ability to breathe. All right. Cutting down our trees is ability to breathe. They are the lungs of the planet. Trees benefit for buildings, neighborhoods. Trees influence temperatures, shades. Trees help cool down the planet. By cutting down trees, our gas, our electric bill going to go up. So I wasn't really going to say nothing about this, but they got, I did my homework going on. They got like 100 sponsors. We ain't need to get them that money. They thought it was sweet. They thought it was sweet until he ran it to me out there in that yard. My program, I target the shooters. I want the shooters. That's what I want. My program is a golf course program. Nobody ain't really paying attention to me. But I'm coming. I'm coming. Nobody really paying attention to me. I'm out there with the shooters every day. Them dudes that ride their dirt bike, let's put it out there. Crossroad. Let's get them to the league and stuff like that. Let's do that. I'm out there with these shooters. These golf course, the people don't live in our community. They come down here and think they're going to be able to do all that stuff. And it's not happening. When you cut the trees down, you killing the earth. I went out there the other day. It's like a cemetery out there, John. A cemetery out there. So I oppose this bill, and I hope any city council or call get with me so we can put this program together. So we can stop the violence. They ain't bringing nothing to our community. Golf is for rich people. Golf is for rich people. I live right down the street from there. They from rich, but he out there shooting golf like it's a game, and these kids out here dying. We going to do something about it? We keep on coming to these meetings. I got more time? He ain't said it. Oh, can I get one more minute? Can I get one more minute?
You have 30 seconds.
All right, 30 seconds. And I'm going to keep, I mean, Jones, he came to me. I went to him. He like the only one I had faith in. But you know, other stuff going on now? Now, I'm saying, we got a meeting tomorrow. I want to make it happen. I'm tired of the violence and stuff like that. I'm sick of it. And I did 20 years in jail. I want to prove that these kids need something to do, man. They need something to do. We keep on talking and talking, and nothing happened. Girl just got killed in a Chinese store around that way. Come on, man. We need something for them to do. You change the minds of the thinking. You take it on the field. We want, we want to get their attention. Put them on the field, and then educate them. What you need, what's going on, stuff like that. We can't keep on having these meetings and stuff like this, and the murder rate going up crazy. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Katrina Clark. Katrina Clark. The next speaker is Sheila Gibson. Sheila Gibson. The next speaker is Jesselyn Blake. Jesselyn Blake, blank. The next speaker is Neda Bay. Neda Bay. The next speaker is Juanita Kilson. Juanita Kilson.
Juanita? Right here.
The next speaker is Jamie Glenn. Jamie Glenn. The next speaker is Lawrence Smolowitz-Sitz. Commenting on 220918.
Yes, hi. My name is Lawrence Smolovich. I'm here to speak on bill 220918 entitled Cobb's Creek Golf Course Overlay District. I live downstream from the golf course in the Cobb's Creek neighborhood, where I regularly organize trash cleanups and bird walks. I'm going to restrict my comments to the current form of the bill. I'm happy to, I'm going to, I look forward to reviewing the amendments and engaging some of the conversations that Councilmember Jones just mentioned. But in its current form, this bill is bad for Philadelphia. The proposed overlay district may only apply to the Cobb's Creek Golf Course, but its effects extend beyond those boundaries. The ordinance, if passed, would create a dangerous precedent of using overlay districts to carve out exemptions to core environmental protections. Steep slope protection is environmental protection. As the zoning code explicitly recognizes, the purpose of the steep slope protection is to promote safe and compatible development throughout the city that avoids adverse impacts and degradation of the environment. Other zoning measures in the same category include heritage tree protections, which were just recently strengthened by the Philly Tree Fund Bill. None of the existing 35 overlay zoning districts exempt those districts from steep slope protection. With all the environmental challenges facing Philadelphia, we should be strengthening, not weakening, our local environmental protections. More specifically, this bill would expose Overbrook in downstream communities like Eastwick and Cobb's Creek, where I live, to serious negative environmental impacts. Steep slope protections exist for a reason. If disturbed, steep slopes are highly susceptible to erosion, leading to sedimentation of nearby streams and related downstream flooding. The stakes could not be higher. There are 254 properties immediately adjacent to the golf course, most of them single-family homes. Downstream communities like Eastwick already suffer from chronic and severe flooding. The burden of proof is on the developer to show that their plans will not harm these communities. So far, the developer has failed to meet this burden. We still do not know key details about the developer's plans. Which slopes will be disturbed? How many trees will be cut down? And how will they control erosion after the trees are cut down? I'm almost finished. One second, please. The proposed overlay zoning district is also unnecessary. It applies to two parcels of land, both under the control of a single developer. That developer could achieve the same result as this overlay district by applying for a zoning variance. In fact, the developer did apply originally for a zoning variance to clear trees on steep slopes of 25% or greater, but abruptly withdrew that appeal in March 2022 before a zoning hearing could take place. Rather than create a new overlay zoning district, the developer could simply reapply for a zoning variance. If the variance is justified, then the developer can achieve the same result as sought through the overlay district. So I'm asking council to reject this bill in the current form. Just one last sentence. Let the developer apply for a zoning variance, meet with the local RCO and community, and have a full and fair hearing on the merits of their plan before the zoning board of adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Ted Pickett. Ted Pickett. The next speaker is Michelle Gaffney. Michelle Gaffney. Commenting on 220918.
Hi, my name is Michelle Gaffney. I am the founder of an organization called Build Like You Live Here, buildlikeyoulivehere.org. I testified in December on bill number 220918. Many of the residents are covering plenty. So I will just say that I appreciate that the amendments are being made, and I hope that they will be publicized for everyone to find. I registered this morning because I thought that this was still on the final passage calendar, because it was listed on the agenda. The agenda was not updated. And I called three different offices trying to find out whether or not it was going to be voted on today, and no one could give me an answer. So I would also appreciate if council could put those updates out more quickly and more accurately. Thank you.
The next speaker is Cynthia Peace. Cynthia Peace. There are no other speakers in opposition, Mr. President.
Thank you.
The speakers.
Well, thank you. For the record, because of the unavailability of those individuals in opposition, we were able to get everyone who has come down to testify in opposition to the golf course proposal. We now go to, I want to go to the support. Just go down the list. Just go down the list, Mr. Decker. I'm sorry. Don't mean to try to tell you how to do your job, sir.
The next speaker in support of 220918, or the first speaker in support of 220918 is Enrique Hervade.
Thank you. My name is Enrique Hervada. I'm the COO for the Cobb's Creek Foundation. I wanted to thank everyone here today for listening to what we have to say. The first thing I'd like to say is, we're not a developer. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that started a partnership with the city well over 10 years ago to try and restore a failing golf course that literally was falling into a creek. It's a historic golf course, dates back to 1916, and has a lot of historic features to it, a lot of significant events that happened there. It's actually in the National Black Golf Hall of Fame. And the golf course really fell into total disrepair. So we've been working on this for over 10 years with Parks and Rec, the Water Department of Philadelphia, and many other experts on creating a sustainable golf course, 27 halls with a driving range, and most importantly, a 30,000-square-foot education center that's going to be available to the children of the community at no cost to them. We are looking at significant partners to come in and help us with that. Plans are underway for a really tremendous opportunity for the youth of Philadelphia. We've also been working with the local schools already, and we've had many events with the students in the area. And we've also had well over 150 meetings with the residents. We recently had an open forum meeting with over 75 residents in person. We've had multiple Zooms. So the notion that we haven't talked to anybody is a little bit of a stretch to me. But I wanted to say thanks to everyone in city council, certainly support this bill, and look forward to its passage, and doing something really great for the City of Philadelphia.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker in support of 220918 is Morgan Moore.
Hello, everyone. My name is Morgan Moore. I am the Director of Education and Community Engagement with the Cobb's Creek Foundation. As Enrique stated, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, not only renovating the Cobb's Creek Golf Course, but building an educational center there on the grounds. I'm sorry, Mr. Frazier is not here, because we are actually in agreement that the city right now has not had a lot of good news coming out of it. Our young people are in peril. Our streets are filled with carnage. And the best way to stop that is to provide educational opportunity. This is exactly what this project is going to do. This golf course has a significant history of racial equity. It allowed African-Americans and women to play in 1916, when that was unheard of. And not only are we going to restore that and bring the game of golf back to our community, but we're also going to have free educational and athletic programming for our students. I could not think of a better way to support them. And I urge our city council people to vote in support of this bill unanimously, excuse me. And I thank Councilman Jones for his vision in supporting this bill. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak.
Thank you for your testimony.
The final speaker in support of bill number 220918 is Ben Duar.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Ben Duan, and I am the Superintendent for the Cobb's Creek Foundation. I'm here in support of the overlay ordinance for the golf course to help move the restoration forward by helping us begin a necessary creek restoration. by helping us begin a necessary creek restoration. I've worked in golf for 13 years and was immediately drawn to this project for various golf reasons and the educational benefits it will provide, all while being run by a nonprofit organization. As a resident of the city who lives 10 minutes from the course, I'm excited to be a part of restoring a historic, 100-year-old lost asset to a golf course and green space the city and neighborhood can be proud of and all can enjoy. It will be a boost economically, educationally, and socially to the community, and I ask for City Council's support in passing this bill.
There are no other speakers regarding Bill Number 220918.
Thank you. Who is the next speaker?
The next speaker, Mr. Chairman, is Jack McCarthy, commenting on 221042.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record and begin your testimony.
Hello. My name is Jack McCarthy. I am here speaking in support of the Music Industry Task Force report. I am a longtime Philadelphia music historian. I have been giving tours, writing, lecturing, working on exhibits, and film documentaries on Philadelphia music, and I have managed major projects for the Philadelphia Orchestra, the Mann Music Center, the Philadelphia Jazz Legacy Project, the Philadelphia Music Alliance. And I say all this to demonstrate that I know whereof I speak when I say that Philadelphia, in terms of, from a historical perspective, is one of the most important cities in the world, without doubt. Across every genre of music, classical, jazz, rock and roll, R&B, gospel, rap and hip-hop, soul music, Philadelphia has produced music and musicians that have transformed the world. This is without question. The problem is that all of these different communities basically work in their own silos, and they don't really work together. And the work of the Music Industry Task Force and the recommendations in its report will help to bring all these disparate communities together to really promote and celebrate Philadelphia music history and its rich live, current music scene. As a music historian, I make it a point to go to the great music cities of the world, to immerse myself in their music cultures. Nashville, New Orleans, Memphis, these cities have thriving musical ecosystems of museums, and tours, and historic sites, and live music venues. We have all the ingredients to do that here in Philadelphia. We just don't have the infrastructure, and the work of the Music Industry Task Force will help to make that happen. We can do what these other great cities do. We have all the ingredients. And just one last thing. Philadelphia had a Municipal Bureau of Music from 1929 to 1932. It helped to support and celebrate Philadelphia music. Its great achievement was the creation of the Robin Hood Dell. So there is precedent. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is David Ivory.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record and begin your testimony.
David Ivory.
Good morning, and thank you for this hearing to give a voice to our music creative economy. I'd like to thank Councilman O for leading the way and the charge here with this hearing and helping the arts and the creative economy. And thank you to the members of City Council for your attention on this very important matter. My name is David Ivory. I am the Chair of the Music Industry Task Force, as well as a Grammy-nominated and multi-platinum music engineer, a producer, and former president and national trustee of the Recording Academy, otherwise known as the Grammys. I share a bit of my background with you to demonstrate my experience and how I dedicated my life to the Philadelphia music industry. I want to take you back several years ago to August 2017. This City Council passed the creation of the Music Industry Task Force to look at the economic impact of the music industry and to articulate ways that the city can help support the music industry of which Philadelphia is so famous for. The Music Industry Task Force looked at other music cities such as New York, Nashville, Seattle, what they were doing to enhance their musical heritage and economy. We also held networking events with emerging artists, professional musicians, and music makers to get a sense of the challenges from the ground. Understanding that the resources were limited, the Task Force surveyed the broader music community to confirm with other music professionals our 10 recommendations. Just a quick history, our hearing was supposed to happen the day of the shutdown of City Council and the city due to COVID, so we're actually back right now for our first time back. Here's the list of recommendations. Number one, and the most important, establish a centralized, permanent Philadelphia music office or commission to continue the work initiated by the Music Industry Task Force. Market the strengths of Philadelphia's rich musical history and current boom of the music venues and artists. Promote Philadelphia music to the city's transportation hubs, such as Philadelphia International Airport and 30th Street Station. The redevelopment of the Sigma Sound Building, 212 North 12th Street, as a cultural center, museum, event space, et cetera. Develop the awareness campaign of fair compensation for working musicians. Establish performing arts priority loading zones and unloading zones, temporary parking areas, so musicians don't get a ticket when they're just trying to unload their gear. Identify sources of funding for sustained dedicated efforts to grow the Philadelphia music economy. Create hubs for music and concert promotion, and utilize the city zoning community to develop policies to help enhance music creators. In conclusion, I hope the City Council will pass the recommendations of the Music Industry Task Force and provide the necessary resources needed to create a permanent Philadelphia music office. Your support to take these steps are vital to preserving Philadelphia's heritage as a music force in the country and the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Don Thompson Morelli, commenting on 221042.
Good morning, esteemed members of City Council. I am Don Thompson Morelli, also known as Don T., recording artist, singer-songwriter, independent, record label owner, author, and president of the Philadelphia chapter of the Recording Academy. I have a storied musical lineage and represent generations of music creators. I am sister to Amir Questlove Thompson. I am the daughter of, yes, I am the daughter of the late legendary singer Lee Andrews, both Philadelphia Walk of Fame inductees. My grandfather is an aside, my late grandfather is Beechey Thompson of the legendary Dixie Hummingbirds, for those of you who love gospel music. You know, as a Philadelphia musician, born and raised in West Philadelphia, the music economy and seeing it thrive is something that is near and dear to my heart. It is for that reason I am asking City Council to seriously consider the Music Industry Task Force's recommendation to help grow our music community and the creative landscape here for the betterment of the city of Philadelphia. As you might expect, I have a vested interest in the development of music-focused cultural centers and programming to establish Philadelphia's significance in music history, both past and present, and the need for a dedicated effort from the city to recognize and help preserve our important music sites like Sigma. I want to reiterate what David Ivory said. Most major cities have a dedicated, established music office. This isn't a new idea. So, you know, and those cities are, David named some, but New York is another one, Austin, Texas, Nashville, many others. You know, I just, Philly has fallen behind, but I believe that we can do better. We should do better. That is my time. I thank you for your time, City Council, your attention, your consideration. The work that you do here in this place is profound, impactful, and very appreciated. Have a good day.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We really appreciate it.
The next speaker is Marcus Bryant, commenting on 221042.
Morning. Greetings, members of City Council, colleagues and fellow Philadelphians. I'm honored to be with you today. For those who don't know, I am Marcus Bryant, Rated Art, and CEO of Loud Series. I'm a singer-songwriter and a producer who works with John Legend, her, Diddy, Ludacris, and many others. I'm an active citizen of Philadelphia and currently serving as the Secretary for the Philadelphia chapter of the Recording Academy, known for the Grammys. I'm an educator and an advocate for creative arts. On December the 9th, 2022, I testified before the Committee on Global Opportunities in the Creative Innovative Economy. The recommendations from the Music Industry Task Force were adopted and issued to this council to be voted on. Today, I am focusing on recommendation number 10. Utilize the city's zoning and community development policies to benefit the music industry. As a professional songwriter and performer, I know that if there are more tax and business incentives for new recording studios, music publishers, and record labels to open businesses here, our creative economy could flourish. One way local musicians, myself included, can be supported by this is the Parking Authority designating performing arts priority loading areas, so that we do not have to risk being ticketed while loading and unloading for our gigs. I know from experience, getting my equipment in and out of the venue safely and not being rushed will make a difference and keep me focused on my performance. Additionally, in order to draw national and international artists to Philadelphia, we have to become an attractive hub. As an artist who also works behind the scenes, having support from Philadelphia's leadership will increase options and create more beneficial experiences and opportunities for the music community. Our city has too much to offer to not be recognized as a viable location for concerts, festivals, and recording studios. We are asking for City Council's support, because if an independent music office is established, it would develop and administer in the growth of the music sector of our city's creative economy, assisting our city's music industry and the recording artist, whose lives depend on it. I understand a budget supporting the creation of a music office that includes investing in a staff will assure that we, as creatives, are not solely responsible for resourcing what is designed to benefit us. A proposed budget will be presented to you in February. It will be a challenge to progress without your assistance. We are asking for your full support as we continue to entertain, uplift, and promote in our great, hopeful city of Philadelphia. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Lauren Talis, commenting on 221042.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's an honor to be before you today. Thank you for granting my peers and I, an audience, and thank you for the thoughtful and tedious work you do day to day for our city. My name is Lauren Talis. I'm a professional recording artist, vocalist, composer, and I tour the world as a United States Cultural Ambassador with our Department of State's Bureau of Educational and Cultural Affairs. I also currently serve our community as the Vice President of the Philadelphia chapter of the Recording Academy, also known as the Grammys. I'm here today asking the City Council to seriously consider the Music Industry Task Force recommendations to help grow our music community and creative economy. The genesis of my music career took place during my undergraduate studies at the University of the Arts. I graduated in 2004. In the nearly 20 years since, I've become deeply concerned that the city that I call home, one that is overflowing with talent so unique, integral, and masterful, that every major touring band in the United States includes somebody from Philly. And it continues to lose its creative talent due to the lack of music industry infrastructure, resources, and environment to thrive. Many of my U-Arts peers and I have since graduating cultivated, accomplished, and illustrious careers. Most of them call New York, LA, and Nashville home. I love this city, and I am yet holding on. In 2019, 53% of Philadelphia artists, musicians, surveyed, said they had considered moving to another city. Retention of young professionals and artists, especially recent graduates, needs to be a priority to continue having them contribute to our creative economy. More infrastructure and support of our creative economy will incentivize our future leaders to stay right here in Philadelphia. The 10 recommendations outlined by the Music Industry Task Force, including but not limited to developing an awareness campaign for fair compensation for working musicians, the marketing of Philadelphia's rich and robust musical history and its music venues, young and legacy artists, promoting Philadelphia music in the city's transportation hubs, such as Philadelphia's International Airport and 30th Street Station, would solve our lack of retention and create a healthy and thriving creative ecosystem. Please pass these recommendations, and it is vital to our success of the creative economy and rightful global distinction as the leaders, trendsetters, and originators across the art sector. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony.
The next speaker is Catrice Cheaton. Catrice Cheaton.
Yes, she is. She's here.
Hello.
Morning.
Hi, my name is Catrice Cheaton. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, hi. So I've been doing community work in this city for like eight years now, and I'm all aware of the ins and outs of the cities, the struggles going on in the city, especially the poor and long-on person here in this city. And I just learned what it's like to be homeless in the last 24 hours. And so did my brother. We were legally evicted from our home yesterday afternoon. Now, we've been fighting the eviction process. It was done in a very illegal manner. And the reason why I'm talking about the bill that is represented today for 210434, was that the police did not handle our situation in a kind way at all. It was very hostile. The sheriff was very hostile. It just wasn't something that they seemed to care about when I mentioned them. We weren't properly notified. We weren't given 10-day notice. Everything that was done was a farce. The housing authority looked the other way. DOJ looked the other way. Mayor Kenny's office looked the other way. The eviction diversion program, the eviction protection program, looked the other way. So then we decided we had to sleep. We had to find somewhere to sleep. So we slept at 30th Street, because Project Home couldn't find anywhere for us to stay together, because as male and female, as a brother and sister, you have to separate. And I say all this to say, the eviction was done as a means to cover up the human trafficking intent on our lives. You have a human trafficking situation in this city, and it's very bad. They're using the eviction court to cover it up. Now, we slept on the bench at 30th Street through the nice, niceties of an actual Amtrak cop, one of the few that was nice to us yesterday. So we know not all cops are bad, but minimal training is like the least that needs to be done in order to be able to, be able to handle people with empathy when they're going to such a hardship, especially when there's something illegal being done, and people keep looking the other way. Minimal training is the least. Empathy is necessary, and you need a spiritual team, a spiritually aware people to handle what's going on, because it's not just me dealing with people. It's narcissists, sociopaths, and psychopaths we're dealing with, and there's those Satan's children. And we're people of God, and that's why we're targeted. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Ogbonna Higgins, commenting on 200658.
Good morning, everyone. After not being in these chambers for almost a month, it would have been nice to see a bill or two in regards to some of the major issues facing this city. Even though so far this year, we see a slight reduction in homicide compared to this time last year, I see no real improvement overall. I come here every Thursday to speak and to draw your attention to the realities of what's happening out here in these streets of Philadelphia. This being an election year, I was at least anticipating something dealing with the dirty streets that have been spoken about, that I've spoken about on several occasions in this chamber, and how just simply cleaning and greening the city would decrease crime and violence by at least 30%. I would think that there would be some sort of resolution or bill in regards to the gun violence, economic development particularly in the Afro-American communities, or just something dealing with how our citizens are driving so recklessly in this city. Even though I am in favor of Bill 200658, an ordinance authorizing the installment of traffic signals or traffic signal at the intersection of Upland Way and Burks, but what good is it if there's no enforcement in this city of laws? I commend Council President for dealing with the over 4,000 people who are on the waiting list to be employed, but how difficult can it be to hire people for the jobs that are vacant? And in regards to the music, I got to tell you, my son, one of my sons is in Germany right now pursuing his music career. He should be in Philadelphia, but because the music industry is not really looked at well in this city, he's in Germany, not a different city, not a different state, but a different continent to pursue his music career. We have to do something immediately in regards to this issue. Thanks.
Thanks for your testimony.
The final speaker today, Mr. President, is Lynn Landis, commenting on 210913.
Good morning. I'm Lynn Landis, publisher of ProtocolsForDemocracy.org. I do support Bill 210913, but today I would like to make some suggestions that will hopefully improve City Council meetings for all concerned. As I suggested at the last City Council meeting, please inform the public that they are allowed to make public comments at City Council meetings on any issue that falls within the preview, purview, I'm sorry, of City Council. So please refrain from restricting our remarks to legislative agenda items only. This is an unconstitutional restriction on our right to free speech. Council can restrict topics for public comment on special occasions, but not for regularly scheduled public meetings. In addition, please give speakers their full three minutes to talk. This is the accepted norm in your written policy, so it is unfair to restrict speakers to two minutes right before they are set to speak. Many speakers have come with prepared remarks, and this last-minute change could really throw them off. Also, please hire a professional to install better sound-absorbent materials in the City Council chamber. There is a strong echo that makes it very difficult to understand people when they are speaking into a microphone. Lastly, please end the requirement for face masks and social distancing at City Council meetings and allow people into the balcony seats. There are no credible scientific studies that prove masking or social distancing stop the spread of any virus. In fact, it is well documented, they do more harm than good. I want to thank those council members who are not wearing masks, but please stand up for our right to not wear them either. We should all be treated equally in a democracy. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. That concludes our public comment for today. I want to thank all those that have testified today and those that are not here. We appreciate your input and your continued participation. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, would you please read the title of Resolution Number 221026?
A resolution urging the United States Congress to pass House Resolution 8105, the Good Jobs for Good Airports Act, to ensure fair wages and benefits for airport workers in Philadelphia and across the nation.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, Resolution Number 221029.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying Title II, I, 41, 1 through 49 Rudy Robinson Way located in the 3rd Councilmanic District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number-
No, no, Councilman. Councilwoman Garcia is not here. I just want to, just give me a motion.
Okay.
Oh, there you go. All right.
Yes, she is.
Thank you, Councilman.
I thought it was-
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion is adopted. Mr. Decker, 221032.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying Title II various properties located in the 3rd Councilmanic District, including on the following streets: Cambridge Street, Fairmount Avenue, and Palace Street.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Garcia.
Mr. President, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 221033.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying Title II various properties located in the 3rd Councilmanic District.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Resolution Number 221033 be withdrawn.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is withdrawn. Mr. Decker, 221042.
A resolution adopting the Philadelphia Music Industry Task Force report and recommendations issued by Council's Global Opportunities and Creative Economy Innovative Economy Committee.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. First, I'd just like to thank the Music Industry Task Force. This has been a long journey. We've done this for several years now. I think it was started in like 2012 or 13. Anyway, it's taken a long time, but we're climbing up the rung of this ladder, and I think the first few rungs have been especially difficult. But it is the music industry leaders themselves and the music industry participants, all the artists, producers, everyone involved has been stalwart in this and just so dedicated. All of this is really volunteer effort, and after the pandemic being hit so hard, you know, with the live music venues and such uncertainty, they have stayed together and continue to push this forward. This report is just that significant. And so with that, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 220918.
An ordinance amending Chapter 14500 of the Philadelphia Zoning Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by creating a new subsection entitled Cobb's Creek Golf Course Overlay District.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for an amendment to Bill Number 220918.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 220918. A copy of that amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for its adoption.
Thank you. All those in favor, the most would signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and Bill Number 220918 has been amended. Bill Number 220918 as amended will be placed on the second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution honoring and congratulating Champion of the Week, the Gerard Academic Music Program Competitive Spirit Squad for becoming the first ever Philadelphia Public League Grand Champions of the Competitive Spirit Championship, introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Cadet Second Lieutenant Kahim Bailey Taylor for receiving the Medal of Heroism, US Army's highest honor for JTROC students, for his bravery in the face of gun violence, introduced today by Councilman Jones on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
On behalf, Mr. President, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that is adopted.
And a resolution honoring Philadelphia's new generation of living legends, Isaac Aki Raw Gardner, Ernest Owens, Chad Fane, Matt Kane, Tom, Tom Flies Manic, Colin Chambers, and Demona, Mona Love, for their roles as podcast influencers as part of the commemoration of Black History Month, introduced today by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
A new list of living legends. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring Word Radio on the occasion of their 20th anniversary and recognizing the station's role as the voice of the African-American community, introduced today by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution commending and honoring Oliver St. Clair Franklin, CBE and honorary consul, for his appointment as commander of the British Empire by Queen Elizabeth II, introduced today by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the 2022 winners of PHL Live Center Stage, introduced today by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our calendar for the day. And are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I wanted to thank everyone here, all my colleagues, yourself, over these many years to get to this point of passing the report, the recommendation of the Philadelphia Music Industry Task Force. Having come to this point, there are more rungs up the ladder, and I know what's coming. Those recommendations, I would urge everyone and everyone listening to look at the 10 recommendations. There are many recommendations that could have been made. These are our top music industry leaders. They try to do things that are practical, things that can be done. One of the most important, of course, will be to establish a permanent music industry office. There's no exaggeration in how great our city is when it comes to the creative arts economy, especially music, just how much talent we have in this city and what it would mean to everyone in our neighborhoods and communities to really give them the platform that they need. This will cost money. It is a challenge between our body and the administration exactly how important of an item this is going to be, but I think council has led the way, and I hope that we will continue to do that. The second thing I want to say is I did introduce a bill today, and it is about the at-large council members. Again, for those who don't know, we have 10 districts, and that covers our entire city, 10 districts, our entire city, yet we have at-large members who travel throughout the city, sometimes in different nooks and crannies, sometimes being approached by people who are looking for help as well. And sometimes they weren't able to get, with so many demands on our district council people, get some assistance or some help because of limiting funding. And the only thing at-large council people can do within this body is ask them where they live and tell them to talk to their district council person, and maybe we'll do an introduction, or talk to their state rep, or talk to the state senator, or talk to somebody. Me, I introduce them to foundations and corporations. We just completed our youth nonprofit symposium. But I do think it is well worth it for at-large council members, seven at-large council members, to be able to say, yes, I'll be able to submit an application so that your nonprofit and the good work that you want to do can be considered for funding as well. So with that, I thank you, Council President and colleagues. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Speeches on behalf of the majority. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me first thank my colleagues, Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman, Councilperson Gilma Richardson, Councilmember Gudier, for their patience. Downstream is a real thing. It affects Eastwick, it affects Cobb's Creek. And so their encouragement for me to talk to the members of their community, I took to heart, and therefore we introduced this amendment to the bill. But I'd like to, for the record, because of the comments, cite some facts. One fact is that the steep slope legislation, I have some understanding of because I'm the prime author of that legislation when we got it passed some years ago, and the intentions of that legislation were to take a hard look at overdevelopment in hillside neighborhoods such as Mannyunk, East Falls, other places in Germantown, to take a look at how we take woodland and make impervious surfaces which makes a downhill slope. We looked at it. We passed it, but it was never truly intended for open spaces like golf courses unless they were trying to build a physical structure. That's number one. Number two, when we argue, and sometimes in this chambers, we argue, but what we never do, and not even in this chamber, is try to villainize people for having a difference of opinion. So when you tend to put me on the front page of Grid Magazine four times, I have to cite to you that I represent 66% of the parkland. I did the Manitona Farms overlay. In these chambers, we had hearings to stop fracking that encouraged Water Department to put in sensors 10 miles up on the schoolkill so that if in fact a catastrophe happened, we could close off those intakes to safeguard our water. In fact, we have, when my colleague introduced, what is it called, the Monsanto Bill? What is the actual name, Member Bass? For the pesticides used by the parks?
What's the legislation?
The legislation?
Yes.
What was the name?
The Hops Bill.
That bill? Outdoor bill, right? Public spaces bill, there you go. I was- I was on that bill, worked with my colleague to figure it out. It was not easy, but we did it. When we were in Upper Whistahickin and joggers and bikers and could not get reception on phones, we held Verizon to task to make those parks safer by connectivity. I cite these things not to brag, but you, everybody has a right to freedom of speech. They do not have the right to freedom of the facts. And so as we look at Cobb's Creek Golf Course, a $80 million investment to restore a historic golf course that Charlie Seifer was only able to work on, and the Brown Bomber, when he came to Philadelphia, played on, to its historic nature, it benefits my district. I will safeguard other districts. We will continue to meet with stewards of the park to figure out how we can do that. But please do not think that the community doesn't benefit. We're talking about three different schools, high schools, that will have golfing programs, golfing teams. Five young people a year will go and learn golf course management. And I'm not just talking about being a caddy, but how to safeguard against pesticides and things like that. There is a commitment from this nonprofit to enrich the community that they reside in. I cannot tell you, I wish I could. Some of the people, national golfers, hint, hint, golfers of color, hint, hint, that are interested in this golf course because of its investment. But I guarantee one thing, that we will continue the communications process, that I will take their considerations to heart. And if we need to amend it again, we will amend it again. But please, just to win an argument, do not create villains where there are none. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gottier.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm excited to be back in this chamber with you all to complete the people's business. Since this is an election year, some have referred to this as a lame duck session of council. But let me be crystal clear. I am not slowing down and I intend to keep championing legislation that uplifts and empowers our most vulnerable residents because there is work to be done and it needs to get done this year. So I'd like to take a few minutes to discuss some of my legislative priorities for this council session. In the next five years alone, over 5,400 affordable housing units are at risk of disappearing across the city and 900 of these are in the third district alone. We have a duty to take bold and proactive measures to preserve as many of these homes as possible. Otherwise, we will enter an even more desperate affordability crisis than we are already in. But this 5,400 number is more than a statistic. It's 5,400 low-income families who may be thrown out of their homes and thrown into the gauntlet with thousands of other families struggling to find an affordable home. That's why on the final day of council last year, I introduced the People's Preservation Package. The package gives the city and our affordable housing partners additional tools that will help us preserve as many expiring affordable homes as possible. This includes requiring property owners to give notice of their intention to sell affordable housing properties to other affordable housing developers and community groups. Property owners will also need to give other affordable housing providers the opportunity to buy an expiring affordable housing development so that the homes remain affordable. In addition, the People's Preservation Package authorizes the city to create a directory of all affordable housing properties in Philadelphia, their funding streams, and when their funding expires. This common sense step will give the city and our partners the information we need to prepare for looming expirations with the intention of keeping families in their homes. The final piece of my People's Preservation Package is a hearing on illegal discrimination against households holding tenant-based vouchers. The Fair Practices Ordinance prohibits landlords from refusing to rent based on a tenant's source of income, including tenant-based vouchers. However, more than 65% of Philadelphia landlords illegally refuse to rent to families with vouchers and we cannot allow this rampant injustice to continue. That's why at this hearing, we will uncover what we need to do to end voucher discrimination once and for all. In addition to affordable housing, I remain focused on championing a bold, targeted, and trauma-informed response to our city's gun violence epidemic. This year, I believe we must devote more attention to supporting youth at risk of or already involved in gun violence. Like many of you, I have heard from my constituents that the city's violence prevention and intervention initiatives focused on young people aren't enough to meet the need on the ground. And as the victims and perpetrators of violence become younger and younger, it is clear that we need to be doing much more to protect our children. So I look forward to my upcoming hearing with Councilman Johnson to determine what legislative and budgetary steps we can take this year to keep Philadelphia's young people safe. I also look forward to working with you all to protect the priorities this body has fought hard for over the past three years. This includes giving grassroots anti-violence organizations funding to complete their work and investing in proven strategies to reduce violent crime such as place-based interventions like cleaning and greening. Last year, my Just Services PHL campaign championed a $30 million investment in improving city services, starting in the neighborhoods disproportionately impacted by gun violence. And I look forward to continuing this campaign during the budget process because it will take much more than $30 million to give working-class, black and brown neighborhoods the level of municipal services they need to disrupt the cycle of violence. This session, I will also turn my attention towards workforce development in the life sciences sector. Millions of square feet of lab space and other real estate have come online in West and Southwest in the last couple of years. These spaces will be filled by life sciences companies focusing on gene and cell therapy, pharmaceutical research and development, veterinary medicine, and more. And these businesses will generate thousands of high-paying jobs, many of which will be available to those without a college degree such as lab technicians. That's why I will hold a hearing to identify steps the city can take to dramatically expand life sciences workforce development so that we can help working-class, black and brown residents benefit from this economic growth. I will seek to establish and expand high-quality training opportunities that prepare working-class residents to be competitive applicants for jobs before they come online. We must also create opportunities to expose young people to the life sciences industry, support GED programs with ties to the life sciences, and link training programs to specific job opportunities. I am excited to build off of the successes of Philadelphia's existing job training and placement initiatives to ensure that the life science industry grows alongside rather than without working-class, black and brown residents. I look forward to working with you all to pass legislation in a budget that prioritizes protecting our most vulnerable residents. Philadelphia is counting on us and I'm determined to deliver. Thank you so much.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Council. I'm sorry. I got caught up in it. You were like, I was waiting for more.
That's okay. I know you were losing your rapt attention. Thank you.
Very impressive, Councilwoman. Thank you so much. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Vaughn.
Welcome back, everyone. I'd like to send out get well wishes to our colleague Catherine Gilmore Richardson. The Councilwoman isn't feeling well. And lastly, I want to say how proud I am of my son, Kevin Lamott Vaughn, who turned 21 today. Super excited. He's in his third year of Howard University and I could not be more proud as a mother to know that my son will one day make a difference in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you.
All right. Awesome. Chair recognizes Councilman Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I want to say Happy New Year to everyone who's here today and I also want to say greetings to all of our colleagues as we work earnestly to deliver for the needs of all the residents of the city of Philadelphia. I was compelled to speak today because I want to make something very clear about why I do the work that I do and why I love to serve. For the past couple, few weeks or so, I've visited residents in neighborhoods throughout our district, the ninth district, from Fern Rock to Logan to Northeast, to East Oak Lane, Mount Erie, West Oak Lane, Borough Home, Oxford Circle, Castor Gardens, Longcrest, Longdale, you name it. We, throughout this time, as I was visiting different neighborhoods, I became overly aware of why I really, really wanted to be the servant of the ninth district and most importantly, be the voice of our people in this area. And it has to do with the fact that I truly believe that when it comes to legislation, when it comes to initiatives that come out of our district, it should not come from the heart of what Anthony Phillips believes should happen. It should not come from the heart of what a few people believe should happen. It should come from the heart and the soul and the ideas of what the majority of the ninth district wants from its leaders. And so I'm here today because I have always believed in collaboration. I've always believed in listening and most importantly, I've always believed in excellence and full execution of ideas and initiatives. And so during my travels, I've come to learn that the ninth district wants a presence of their council member and I vow to be very present amongst all, among all the neighborhoods in the ninth district. They also want their council member to listen and I vow to listen and I want to also do. They also have made it very clear that quality of life issues, great standard of living, is something that's really important to our, to our district. So with that being said, and listening, I have come to understand that we have a serious truck parking issue in our district, semi-tractor trailers. That is why I've been glad to work with Councilman O'Neil and Councilman Driscoll on initiatives that are not only affecting my district, but also their districts and other districts in the city of Philadelphia. Because what I've come to understand is that there is nuisance in truck parking in the city of Philadelphia. And what's happening is that they're ruining pavements, they're also ruining people's property value, and they're also creating blight and it's not safe for our children. I've walked behind trucks at night and I've seen how dangerous this is. So this legislative session, I'm hoping that we are able to get, I'm not hoping, I'm asking, I'm demanding, that we rid this problem of semi-tractor truckers, semi-tractor trailers in the city of Philadelphia because there are places to park and we will definitely find more places to park for our truckers, but we can no longer allow for people to get away with doing illegal activity when they know it's illegal. In addition to that, what's also important to our neighbors is that they're concerned about abandoned cars, they're concerned about loitering, they're concerned about dumping, and they're concerned about public safety, just like all of us. And when it comes to public safety, what I've heard is that they're interested in mental health programs, but they're also interested in youth, quality youth programs. They're interested in going back to Leon Sullivan days and doing something around jobs over crime. And they're also interested in finding ways of how we can do more town watches, which will require not as much legislative as much, but more funding and also more initiatives, starting with me as their representative. I see myself not as an authoritative figure in a way that I am the dictator of the ninth district. I see myself as a facilitator of ideas, making sure that all of us, all of our voices are heard. I just want to say that I'm excited about this new year and what this new year has come and I thank all of my colleagues, especially the more seasoned ones who have been here for welcoming me, including you, Council President, and helping me become adjusted to this very, very different auspicious body of work when it comes to city council. Because one of the things that I'm also serious about is figuring out a ways how to make the city much more efficient and effective and responsive to our neighbors. I come from a background of being an executive in nonprofit, working for young people, and we had a whatever-it-takes approach to everything that we did. We stayed up all night, all day, just to get things done and things got done. And I am, have, I have that mentality when it comes to city council, but I also want to thank people for helping me become more acquainted with this body of work. And I think because I have a service background, this hasn't been that hard of an adjustment. But what has, and that's why I continue to be earnest with the work that I'm doing. So with that being said, thank you all so much and I look forward to presenting more ideas that comes from the voices of the people of the ninth district because I'm a representative of that voice and I believe in collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Harity.
Hello, Council President, fellow members. Today I introduced legislation to amend section 9-1100 of the Philadelphia Code to expand access to life partnership, to expand access to life partnership regardless of gender identity of the individual in the relationship. I'd like to thank Councilmembers Driscoll, Gilmore, Richardson, Jones, Thomas, Quilla, and Vaughn for cosponsoring. Life partnership, life partnerships do not provide the same rights to a couple as a marriage and can be determined, terminated at any time, but it can allow some couples to obtain certain benefits including life insurance coverage, medical decision-making, and visitation rights. This legislation brings Philadelphia in line with other cities such as New York, which has amended their life partnership ordinance to include all couples regardless of gender. While not all insurance carriers will provide the same benefits to life partners as spouses, it is essential that the status be afforded to all Philadelphians as a way to show their commitment to the individuals they love and to obtain important rights and privileges while being traditionally, while not being traditionally married. It is my hope that in the year, the new year, that we continue to make changes to the law which expands the rights of all Philadelphians while we work to tackle the most pressing issues of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Yes, Councilman Harity. I passed along that I wanted to co-sponsor that. It's my office's fault, but I'll be on it and this is public notice that I'm co-sponsoring because I intended to from the beginning. Congratulations. Okay.
Thank you, Councilman. Yeah. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
I was following protocol, sir. Waiting for the acknowledgement. That's all. I'm going to speak out of line. Also, Council President, I would like to be on the record co-sponsoring the Councilman Harity's bill. I want to ask Council President, first and foremost, before we do it formally, take a moment of silence for my chief of staff, Christopher B. Sample, who passed away. His service was yesterday. I want to thank all the council staff members who actually took time out of their schedule and showed up. I want to thank Councilman Jamie Gardiero and Councilman Cindy Bass and Councilman Curtis Jones for being supportive of the family and showing up. And we really appreciate as a staff and as a team, all that outgoing love and support that my team has received going through this very, very trying process. Chris Simp was not only my chief of staff, but also a friend, but most importantly, he was a lifelong public servant here in the city of Philadelphia, working with the first African-American, African-American mayor here in the city of Philadelphia, Mr. Wilson Good, Sr., as well as the first African-American congressman, which is Mr. William Gray, as well as our district attorney, Lynn Abrams, and also myself. And so he's going to be truly missed. Always had a smile around the office. I call him Billy D. That's how smooth he was, right? Old-school Denzel Washington. So we're going to definitely continue to keep his life and legacy going with the work that we're doing and just ask for official moment of silence on his behalf.
Thank you. May we please have a moment of silence? Please stand. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Really good, really good person. Loved him. Thank you. Councilwoman Gardiere, did you, did you want to be recognized again? You good? Okay. All right. Oh, Councilman Johnson?
These are my official remarks. Just a couple announcements, a couple of brief announcements. You know, as I sit and I listen to colleague Councilwoman Sharon Vaughn speak with pride and joy about her boy turning 21, attending the prestigious Howard University, you know, my heart's smiled. And also, it brings me to the reality of why myself and Councilman Curtis Jones is hosting a mayor forum tonight on gun violence. The only topic that we believe that should be addressed by all the candidates is the number one issue that we have been working very aggressively on here in this chamber, in this body, is addressing the issue of senseless gun violence here in the city of Philadelphia. Day in and day out, I have met so many mothers. I just honor a group of mothers who didn't have the ability to see their son turn 21 years old. I work with plenty of mothers and fathers who every holiday will sit at a table where there's an empty seat because they have lost a son, and even daughters, to senseless gun violence. And so this evening, Councilman Curtis Jones as chair of public safety, and myself as the chair of the Special Committee on Gun Violence, will be hosting a mayor candidate forum at St. Joseph University at Mandeville Hall. It starts at 6:00 PM. We want everyone who has the ability to come out and listen to what these candidates have to say about this particular topic to participate. It also will be streamed live on WPBI Channel 6, as well as WRD. And so this is going to be a very, very critical and telling forum to see where we're at. Because this is the number one issue that we need to be addressing day in and day out here in the city of Philadelphia. And if you're interviewing for any job, you need to be, do your research and come to work. Come to interview ready to do work. So I look forward to this forum this evening. Also, on Monday at 10:00 AM, we will be hosting a transportation and public utilities hearing on the Septus Bus Revolution Plan. This will give my colleagues, as well as the wider public, the opportunity to listen, ask questions, and be informed on the overhaul Septus Transportation Revolution Plan that's going to take place not only in my councilmatic district, but all throughout the city of Philadelphia. To the general public that's listening, if they would like to give testimony, please get in contact with my office at 215-686-3412 or 215-686-3413, extension eight, and ask for my legislative aide and policy person, Ms. Brett Needlekoff. And she'll take down your information to make sure you're able to sign up for public testimony. And you must do it before 3:00 PM Eastern Time by Sunday, January the 22nd. And you can do that also by email. And her email is brett, B-E-R-T-T dot Needlekoff, N-E-D-E-L-K-O-F-F at philadelphia.gov. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, sir.
Again, we want to make sure that anytime you start talking about changing routes and how people go to and from work, and how people go to and from the doctor, people at least have to have an idea of what that plan looks like. But most importantly, it's safe because it's definitely going to change the quality of some individual lives. And so with that being said, thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Yeah, they have some explaining to do about Route 48, Route 7?
Forty-eight.
Route 25, right? It goes on and on over in my neck of the woods. Thank you, Councilman. We'll make sure our people tune in. Thank you. With that, Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the council stand adjourned until Thursday, January 26, 2023, at 10:00 AM.
Thank you. It's moving in second, and the council stands adjourned until Thursday, January 26, 2023, at 10:00 AM. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Noes opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you all very much.